All right, let's call this meeting order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under our command. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. It's good to see all seven of us in the same room together. Thank you for being here. Congratulations to our participants in the election yesterday.
Let's move on.
We have minutes from the May 6 meeting. You should have all received those. Any additions or corrections?
Move for approval. Oh, move for approval.
This is Leisure. Mr. Saunders, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. I keep now wanting to go to a roll call vote, but I think that's necessary with us all sitting here together. We have no appointments for committees or boards today. We do have some new business. So first up is the probation department. And Madam Auditor, you were going to discuss this for Mr. George.
For those that have the packets, I wasn't sure who was going to be here this morning. We will have the letters from Mr. George from the probation department. Due to the fact that they won't be doing much traveling, they have had to purchase them more office supplies to equip them for COVID, and they are asking to transfer $2,500 from travel to office supplies to cover some of those costs.
All right, sounds reasonable to me. What's your pleasure, Counsel?
I would make a motion that we approve that transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Beeson. We have a motion to approve the transfer, seconded by Mr. Chamnus. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
The second transfer request that I have comes from the bridge fund. Mrs. Christ called me and told me that they have been working on Bridge 720, which is account number 6,015. They will be short funds when she turns in the next bill that is due by next Wednesday. On the positive side, Bridge 523 has been put on hold, and she would like to transfer $150,000 from Bridge 523 to Bridge 70 with your permission.
Of course, you're all aware that Mr. Warner retired a couple of weeks ago, and we have a...the assistant bridge engineer is continuing operations while a search goes on. So this is something that happens fairly frequently when an issue comes up to hold up construction on one bridge and then we'll move funds to another. So what's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
She did want me to let you guys know that she was looking at the books, and she is fairly confident that there would be enough appropriations to move around, but she is thinking that there's going to be two more bridges that she will need to do a transfer for.
Okay.
And she will watch the books.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion transferring $150,000 from Bridge 523 to Bridge 720? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is to create a new fund, number 9146, the Wayne County Small Business Loan Program. As you're all aware, the Wayne County Revolving Loan Program, along with the Economic Development Corporation, Wayne County, the City of Richmond, and the Economic Growth Group are working collaboratively to develop a 0% loan program for small businesses that have been negatively impacted by the coronavirus. And this is part of that process so that there is a separate fund that will allow for detailed tracking of businesses that are part of this program once we get it launched, and both the expenses going out from the fund, but also remember this is a loan program, so there'll be repayments, and ultimately, those repayments will go back in the same proportions to the contributors to the loan program. So City of Richmond, Wayne County, Economic Development Corporation, the Consolidated Edit Fund, and the Revolving Loan Fund are all participating and will receive on a, what, semi-annual basis, their share of the loan payments. So the request is to create a fund 9146. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Mr. Smith makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Saunders. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of creating the new fund? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next is an Economic Development Corporation claim of $250,000 of consolidated edit.
Is to transfer it to fund 9146.
Remember, it is currently in the line item 4906, contractual professional. It's already appropriated. We would just be transferring it. Mr. Poust, I know because of our meeting schedule on the first Wednesday, we meet before you. Have you all...I know Valerie had a meeting on Monday, and they approved this, but you all haven't actually acted.
Yeah, not yet, no. But we'll work it out today.
So would it be appropriate for us, Ron, to transfer it, subject to approval by the commissioners? Or what should we do there?
He's not listening.
Did you...Ron?
Ron.
Mr. Cross? Would it be appropriate for us to take action to approve this transfer of consolidated edit dollars to the new loan program fund, subject to the ratification by the commissioners at their meeting this afternoon?
That would be appropriate. The agenda item doesn't indicate where the monies are going to be transferred.
They're going to be transferred to the...
9146.
The fund that we...number that we just created. So I'm looking for a motion to transfer $250,000 from Consolidated Edit, line 33200, contractual professional.
So move to...
Subject to the approval of the commissioners at their meeting this afternoon. Is that part of your motion, Gary?
Yeah, Bob made the motion, I'll second it.
Did he beat you? Okay.
He beat me.
Mr. Chamnus made the motion, subject to confirmation by the...
Subject to.
Okay. And Mr. Saunders seconded, in a roundabout kind of way. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, the Wayne County Edit, there's a claim for $150,000 payable into that same fund that we just created.
Yes.
And if you will recall, at our last meeting, we did an additional appropriation from Wayne County Edit, and we approved that unanimously. But subsequent to that approval, the Department of Local Government Finance changed the procedures for additional appropriations. So whereas previously, if it had not been a property tax fund, then it was not subject to being advertised and having a public hearing, but...
When I went on to Gateway, which is now where we have to file the additional appropriations, it would not allow me to do it without putting in the date of publication and the date of hearing. And when I contacted our DLGF rep, she said all funds have to be advertised. And so we have now got it advertised. It will be on workshop this month, which would be June 17th, for the actual additional appropriation. But with COVID and some of the memos that DLGF has passed out, I felt that it was still appropriate to go ahead and have the claim prepared, because we are following the proper procedure, and it's just kind of in reverse order. It would fall under DLGF's COVID rules to go ahead and make the change.
So this is probably another thing we should refer to, Mr. Cross. There is this COVID exception if you're trying to follow the rules.
The exception allows you to spend the money before you appropriate it, or commit the...
Which...
Which is kind of nonsensical.
Isn't it counterintuitive? Yes.
But it's easier to comply than, you know, confront, so I agree with the auditors.
And again, because we're trying to get this loan program up and running as quickly as possible, it seems to make sense to go ahead and transfer the money, which obviously we have. We have...there's over 3 million, about 3 and 1/2 million almost, in the Wayne County Edit Fund, and we're talking about $150,000.
And in this case, we will have had the necessary public hearings prior to any actual release of funds, based upon the timeline that he's talked about.
Right. But again, for...because we have so many other partners who are being asked to go ahead and transfer the money and make it available, I think it's appropriate that we do this and not be as kind of the host government for this program, to not be the last ones here. So with that lengthy introduction, what's your pleasure here? And do you have a comfort level with going ahead and doing this?
I have a comfort level with it, because we will be spending until after, probably after this additional appropriation anyway. So I move that we transfer the money.
Second.
$1,000.
We have a motion by Mr. Saunders, seconded by Mr. Gillum. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is to create another fund, and this goes to the CARES Act. And there's $2.1 million that came from the federal government to the state, and the state determined to transfer $300 million to all of the local governments in Indiana. Wayne County shares roughly 2.1 million. And so this would create fund number 8901, the CARES COVID Relief Fund, which will allow the commissioners to make purchases, like 143,000 face masks and a few other things that will keep our...both our internal staff as well as the public safe from this pandemic. So do I have a motion to create that fund?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Seconded by Mr. Beeson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next is an updated timeline for the 2021 budget process, and...
I don't know that everybody has it. I know that if you were sitting up there, that you will have it. Excuse me, after the meeting, I'll make sure you get a copy. I have updated the budget timeline for 2021 and added all of these Wednesdays at 5:00 or even at the meeting, so you can discuss the budget. The department heads, council workshops are July 14, 15, and 16, starting at 5:00. The departments are supposed to have any written requests to change the 2,000s and 3,000s back to the auditor's office by noon on June 26. So far, the response that I've heard is that nobody is really going to be changing anything.
Which is what we requested. If you recall, you asked me to send the department heads a letter. I sent that all to you for comment before sending it out. So essentially, we're asking department heads to maintain status quo for their...for 2021, a budget that has the same bottom line as their 2020 current operating budget, with the flexibility if they needed to move money around from one line item to another, that we would allow that. But also, the possibility that some cuts would be necessary. We're still working on that. Hopefully, they will not be. And again, if a particular item needs to be increased, they're allowed to do that, but we've asked them to send us specific information in writing on the necessity for increasing a line item without maintaining a flat budget. So again, there may be certain things that come up that we need to deal with. I think we've been very prudent over the years in developing some reserve funds, and so we do have some latitude to make some changes as we need to, and to address issues as they come up. I just saw an email this morning from Mr. Higginbotham, saying that there's an issue with the generator at the jail. So, you know, those things happen, and we are prepared and ready to deal with those as they come up.
If you recall, usually the first week of August, DLGF is usually here in the building, and they meet with all of the taxing units. This year, it is going to still be the first week or second week of August, but it will be virtual. It will not be in person, and they have not scheduled a meeting yet. As soon as I get that, I will pass that out to you guys.
So the dates for our initial round of workshops, July 14, 15, and 16.
Yes.
And then, as in recent years past, we've kind of reserved Wednesday evenings going forward to have additional budget workshops and conversations going forward. So those will all be advertised. Essentially, that's it. September 16, the public hearing, and final adoption, October 21 is the tentative date. Questions on the timeline for the budget? Again, I want to commend you all for your foresight. I think there will be some challenges this year, but I think due to your hard work and that of our department heads, we're pretty well positioned to deal with this. You know, people question why we have a rainy day fund, and my answer now is, I think it's raining.
It's raining. It's almost pouring.
So...
It's almost pouring.
So anyway, kudos to all of you. And speaking of Mr. Higginbotham, yes, ma'am.
Before you turn it over to Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes.
Tomorrow at 1:00, commissioners and all of council, you are invited to participate in the exit conference for the State Board of Accounts. I can give you the telephone number to call in if you would like to be involved in that. Saying that, it is subject to be canceled, unfortunately. Again, we're having some trouble with the health center submitting the corrective action plans so that they can actually close out the audit.
Is it not also...in the past at least, we have not been allowed to have a quorum at that meeting?
I was asked this morning on my phone call with the State Board of Accounts to invite all of council and all of commissioners. You do not all have to attend, but I am responsible for inviting all of you.
So, Ron, if that is the case, I mean, is this our meeting? Is this their meeting?
It's their meeting, and it is...everything is confidential until it's...the actual audit is approved by the auditor's director. So it's somewhat of an exception. If I'd known in advance, out of precaution, I would have advised open door as an executive session, but in this instance, I think it's important to get the information we need in the audit.
And so if it is canceled tomorrow and rescheduled for a week or two from now, you think we should, then...
We'll...I'll have that through the open door notices.
Okay.
Okay. Again, I did not find out until 7:30 this morning, so...
And you don't know yet whether tomorrow's canceled or not?
I do not. I have an email I need to share with you regarding that.
So again, as Ron just said, when we've participated in these...in person in the past, we've been cautioned to not share any of this information with anybody who's not in that meeting. So that restriction will be on anyone who participates in the phone call, that this is not public information at this point, and won't be until State Board of Accounts actually files their final audit.
Right. The process allows for us to respond, comment.
To them.
And advise corrective action plans if that is deemed appropriate, but it also allows us to question, if you will, or I don't say challenge, but you can question an audit finding if you believe it's improper, and have done that in the past.
But even those things are not public information.
Nothing is public until...
We're able to communicate back with them, but not with anybody else. Okay. Everybody good on that? Tony, question?
Ron, how can we even meet if it's not executive session?
It is an executive...it would be a...we will advertise it as an executive session.
For tomorrow?
But not for tomorrow, because...
We can't for tomorrow.
I mean, how can we meet tomorrow?
It's...I think the theory, as Mr. Plaster said, it's not our meeting, it's theirs, and they can control who they invite.
But can't the public come in?
No, no. No, it's not a public meeting.
Okay.
The field examiner is not subject to the open door.
All right. So again, up to you whether you want to participate, and it's at what time again?
It's at 1:00.
Okay.
Does anybody else want?
No. Yes. Okay. Let's move on again to Mr. Higginbotham, and he is going to share with us information about opening of the building and the plan that's being put in place. Good morning, Mr. Higginbotham.
Good morning. Just to touch a little bit, I want you to think about the generator.
Yes.
I would anticipate that cost of fixing this is going to be between $10,000 and $15,000. Yesterday, when we went through the weekly test for the generator, it would not transfer to full load because of the voltage regulator. And then, as I've told you on other things, the voltage regulator on this unit is obsolete, and it takes a new piece of equipment from Caterpillar, as well as a conversion kit. We did locate one in Indianapolis, should be here tomorrow and installed, but I think that's going to be the estimated cost for repairs. As Jeff said, you know, we're moving towards reopening county government. We've had some departments come back. Obviously, voter registration was back because of the early voting. Fairgrounds personnel, highway came back last week. This week, building commission, planning, weights and measures, and building grounds are back full time. And then the next two weeks, the rest of the departments will move towards coming back by June 15. But I want to zero in specifically on the reopening of the courts. The courts are guided by the Indiana Supreme Court as to the parameters that is needed for them to reopen. I put before you a document that's Appendix B, Planning Consideration Checklist for Court Operations. That is part of a larger document that was put out by the Indiana Supreme Court, and if you wanted the whole document, I'll make that available to you. But I just wanted to go through some potential items on here that will need to be acted upon by commissioners, council, building grounds, as the courts reopen. And because your schedule doesn't particularly fall on the timing of the courts, I wanted to give you a heads up before we get into this, because you're going to...I think you're going to need to make some decisions fairly quick in the next 35 days. So on that first page, I've just highlighted some areas that would be potential costs or things that we needed to supply to the courts. On that first page is requiring providing masks or other personal protection equipment. I think Jeff indicated that, and I think you did make an appropriation line item for the CARES Act. I think a lot of these items could be paid for that. I'm not suggesting that they will, but that's a decision that needs to be made at some point. Then, on down there, I want to...excuse me. The last one, develop a plan to sanitize the court after each hearing. That's a logistics issue that building grounds just will not be able to handle. As you know, we have six courts, and several of those courts have multiple hearings throughout the day. I mean, we're talking, gosh, probably 10 or 15 hearings in the severe three and in the small claims court. The other courts don't have quite that many hearings, but to provide sanitation to each one of those courtrooms on a daily basis would require some extra manpower or contractual work.
And did I understand that between every hearing, there needs to be some cleaning done?
Right. Now, Judge Todd has been charged with writing the protocol for the reopening of the courts based upon the guidelines provided in this document. That was submitted to the Supreme Court last Friday, and I hope that they will hear something yet this week as to whether or not that plan's been approved, but no doubt it's going to include some of these items in that.
So in case Mr. Higginbotham's comments were too subtle...
Yeah, I'm not speaking for the...I don't want...I'm not speaking for the courts either.
I understand. Let me be a little more blunt in terms of staffing. So as we've been looking at the CARES Act and what potentially could be paid, it seems to some of us that if we have to hire additional cleaning staff to take care of the courts in particular, but the rest of our buildings in general, to keep them sanitized, I think that's an expense that the CARES Act could pay for through December 31 of this year. So, you know, we may need to consider temporary employees to do some of these things, and who knows what might happen subsequent to December 31, whether that's going to be extended, whether there'll be additional resources made available or what. But I think this has become an issue, not only with cleaning, but also potentially with security, and having enough people to check temperatures or to make sure the doors are open and people don't go into unauthorized areas and so on, as we develop a plan for the building being open to the public again. So again, I think that's probably something that the CARES Act could pay for through the end of this year, at least at the moment. Mr. Cross?
Do you have a feel whether the CARES Act would also pay if contracted out the cleaning service?
Yes. I absolutely believe it will.
Yep.
But again, that's a point of discussion. And again, remember that specifically, the commissioners have the authority to spend the dollars from the CARES Act, but obviously, council has the responsibility to determine when and if we hire additional staffing. So there's some overlap in the discussion here.
Which is the very reason why I wanted to get you out ahead of this as we move through this next month. On the second page then, a lot of those items just, again, deal with logistics and needed supplies with respect to cleaning the courtrooms and how that might look. supplies with respect to cleaning the courtrooms and how that might look. On the second page, under courthouse facility plan, that third bullet point down or the highlighted one, determine how mail will be handled, especially from prisons to treat for contamination. You know, certainly we don't have anything in place that would address this other than quarantining the mail for three days. And that causes some logistics problems if there's documents that needed to be delivered on a timely manner to the courts.
I have a comment.
Yep.
This affects all 92 counties, obviously. So have we had any information from other counties on how they're handling this?
Yeah, for example, one of the issues that came up in a meeting that we had with the courts several weeks ago was just the logistics of handling juries. In this document, the Supreme Court is suggesting or directing that on the jury questionnaire that's set out, there's additional questions now added if they've had contact with somebody with COVID and which in the long run is probably going to make more people eliminated from the jury pool, so the jury call pool will have to be larger. So when you bring in 100, 150 people for a potential jury call, where are you going to put them and maintain social distancing? So I think Delaware County, for example, are doing it off site. They are doing jury selection at another location, something larger like, you know, their fairgrounds.
COVID center.
Yeah. Then on the third page, again, some bullet points, temperature checks, who's going to administer them, and that goes to your point of extra security possibly. Then the bullet point about the middle of that document there on the third page, as these hearings and the logistics for the numbers that they have to accommodate, the judges may consider evening or weekend hearings. So that would require extra security for that to be in the building. And then, and then the last page, again, just referring to the equipment and supplies that's going to be needed on the scale that will be needed because there's probably going to be a directive that everybody, including the public, has to have a mask before they enter the building and have to have their temperature taken. So if you've got a jury call coming in of 100 people, can you imagine just getting those people timely into the building for the hearing? So I simply provide this to you. No question that your workshop, I would hope that we have the judges' approved plan back by then so that this becomes a little more clear what's going to be required.
Questions for Mr. Higginbotham? Thank you very much for the update, Steve. I appreciate it.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Not necessarily for Mr. Higginbotham, more of a personnel thing. These people that we would hire to temporarily do this cleaning and so forth through this, would there be a way that they would be like assigned as being temporary employees so once we're past this, then their jobs go?
Yes.
Or is there a way to...
They could be temporary employees that are not eligible for benefits.
Okay.
Or, which seems to me to be maybe the better option if can be made to work would be to hire through an agency that does that kind of thing.
Contract with somebody, yeah.
But again, the commissioners will determine what kind of plan they want to adopt, obviously in this case in concert with the judges. And if it's an area that touches on council responsibility, meaning hiring employees, then they would come to us with a proposal. Does that sound reasonable to you, Mr. Poust?
Very much so.
Well, that's a tremendous segue for Mr. Poust to give commissioner comments.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you take this off? I keep fogging up.
I know the feeling.
Okay. Well, we've got a lot that's been going on. It's nice to see all of you back in chambers again as we are moving along. Let's see where we are on the projects we have on the courthouse havoc system. We're continuing to work on the punch list. Only have a couple of items left that we need to take care of, otherwise that project will be completed. Jail bond project, still moving along slowly, although some of the folks are coming back to work, some of the subcontractors. So we are beginning to move along on that project and I think within another month, we'll be up in full running again on that project. And so that should move along fine without any real problem. Jailhouse security, the contract documents are here and Steve will be presenting those to the commissioners this afternoon, so we will be looking at all of that. The Guardian item, the vending machines have been moved to the back hallway, so we'll move forward on that new office that we're doing for the Guardian item. Online permitting, we've had our first meeting on that last week and we're looking forward to begin in the middle of the month to start writing the software and everything to put digital processing in place. So I think that's going to work out very well for us and I think folks will be very happy with that. Talked to a member of council yesterday about an event that they're having in their community and I did some further work after that with our public health department. And if you recall in the past, we've had some discussion about permitting when festivals are held and the ability of folks to be able to get their permit and so on. And in the past, they've had to come into the public health department to be able to get their permit. Once we get the permitting in place here, they'll be able to do that in advance and the public health through the food inspectors will be able to do all the work they need to do and have that ready and available for those folks to come in to the community and set up their food vending equipments. We're looking forward to that project moving forward and being real advantageous to the folks that are coming into the area. And speaking of that, in talking, you know, I've told you about the recorder's comments of how effective they've been able to work from home. Had a conversation earlier in the week with Nancy Jackson, who is the plant director in the auditor's office, and we were talking about how that was working. And Nancy went back in her records and in 2019, they processed 264 deeds. 19 of those were done online. This year, Nancy's been working from home. She processed in the same month 170 deeds, but they did 144 of them all online. And she said those folks that she's been working with are so pleased with this because it's so much simpler to do and not having to come down into your office. And this is one of those outcomes that has been available, but the folks just haven't been using it. Well, they had to use it during COVID-19 and they found out how easy it is. So now we have the recorder's office, we got the auditor's office where the folks won't be coming into the office anymore. They're doing it online. They said, my guys, we can get it all done here. And the link's the time where before it just took us to walk down there and spend time talking to the folks and so on. So another, and I'm sure we're going to find other departments where folks have found out what they could do online that will be very beneficial to us as we move forward and we bring everybody back into the office. As Steve mentioned to you, we are going to be bringing everybody back on June 15th. We will continue to do by appointment only for the next two weeks and then we will fully open the facility up in July, on July 6th. In the meantime, Steve and myself and Beth, we've been working to get ready for that opening and to source the material that we need and in working with the CARES Act, our ability to be able to pay for funding for masks, hand sanitizer, other PPE equipment. So we do have, as you can see out in the hallway, we have our first shipment in of masks. That's 126,000 masks that you have out there. I actually have 376,000 of those masks on order. We will be receiving next week another shipment of masks coming in. And you may say, oh my gosh, what are we going to do with all those masks? So Steve and I sat down and started looking at what we anticipate may happen in the court system when they come back with what they're going to require us to do. We anticipate that we could utilize somewhere between now and the end of the year 300,000 masks in supplying with everybody that may have to have a mask. So that's an unknown item to us. We've been able to source this. I've been able to get the price down considerably over what most folks are paying for those masks. We still are looking now at the purchase of another 300,000 masks, which are in stock, ready to ship. All I have to do is give the okay for those to come. As we look at that, we've been working along with, as Jeff has explained to you, about the revolving loan fund, him and Val and Melissa has worked on with several organizations. We're looking at the small businesses here in Wayne County that have not been able to purchase some of these PPE equipments. That we'll be able to buy those through our stock of masks, for example, and to be able to provide those to the small businesses at no cost to those and will be reimbursed through that for the CARES Act. Both Jeff and I have been very, very careful in writing to the Indiana Finance Authority on the larger purchases to make sure that that's legitimate expenditure because we don't want to go out and spend considerable amount of money and then have them say, oh, well, we don't think that's a legit expenditure on there. So we are watching that and what we do, they have a site now where if you have a question, you send it in and they've been very good. Jeff and I both have been surprised because we've got an answer the next day each time we've sent in and we thought it'd probably take weeks to get an answer, but it's been very good.
Yeah. I did share with you the responses I got from the Indiana Finance Authority, who is the final arbiter of what is reimbursable and what is not. Now Roger said he didn't get that, but did the rest of you get it? Okay, so I'll check into that and make sure before we leave today that you'll have
Copy of that.
That email chain in hand so you can see what their responses are. What Kenny, I think, is alluding to is it appears that the CARES Act contemplates local governments making PPE and sanitizer, hand sanitizer and sanitizing cleaning equipment and solutions available to small businesses at no cost to them. And then we could be reimbursed through this CARES Act. A couple of things that we need to track very carefully. Number one, it's 2.1 million and some change that Wayne County has been allocated. So obviously, the commissioners are going to make very sure that all of the county's needs for our employees, our patrons, our citizens coming into our buildings to do transactions, that that's going to be taken care of. But if there is additional money, if we do nothing with it at the end of December, it goes back to the state at least and maybe to the feds. So if there are these allowable uses that don't interfere with the county doing what it needs to do for its own operations, it seems prudent to me that we would make things available to the public, the businesses, the organizations that need those things so that they can reopen safely or continue operations safely. So if there's a situation, for example, with this revolving loan fund, if we were going to make a loan to somebody to purchase masks, perhaps we can actually give them those masks and they can use those loan dollars for some other expenditure that's not possible through the CARES Act. So anyway, all of those things that...
Good explanation.
Yeah.
Jeff, I think you and I both listened through on the original tape that we got from state on the proper usage of those funds.
Right.
We also understand that each town in Wayne County receives...
Correct.
An allotment of funds for that too.
Correct.
Will there be coordination between the cities and us on how we're going?
I think we need to do that. I know Kenny's been talking to the mayor of Richmond. Have you had any conversations yet with councils?
I've had no contact with any of the towns.
And we should do that, I think.
The city, of course, the mayor and I are in constant communications almost daily, at least every other day, as we're looking at and coordinating a lot of different things. For example, we've sourced out 80,000 masks for them that we've sourced out that will be coming in, that will be going to them, that they're doing and part of our bulk purchasing that we're doing. But no, Bob, nobody from any of the towns have reached out to me, but I will reach out to them. I talked to the president of Hagerstown Council last night and told her that we were here, willing to assist them in any way we could.
I know Richmond was allotted, what, 1.4?
1.4 million, yes.
But from there, it drops off dramatically. So I think the largest town is Centerville.
Centerville was about 80,000.
85,000.
Down to, Economy is like 4,500 or 5,000, something like that.
Cambridge and Hagerstown are in the 50,000 range.
Correct, correct. So it is allocated by population. So obviously, the smaller the town, the less money.
I was just thinking, you know, with the amount of money that's been distributed throughout the county, that there should be some coordination.
Absolutely, absolutely. And not only for that, we need to get to a model that does that consistently.
Good. Okay. Sneeze guard, we're working on that. As Steve has said, to open up the facility in here to make sure all of our people are safe. So I think we have that all finalized now as to how we're going to do that and talking to the different departments for exactly the size of the cuts they want and everything. And so those are all being custom built to fit in those particular areas. So that's moving right along, so I'm pleased with that. I have had some conversation with the schools and coordinating with them as to what their needs might be. Basically, they don't know yet at this time as to what's going to happen. So I've told them, well, we're here, we're available to assist you and work with you. I did send out to the superintendent of Richmond Schools and a conversation I had with him, I happened to ask him if he had seen what the Supreme Court sent down for all the courts and he had not seen that. And I said, you know, they're all talking on the state. And I said, my guess is a lot of the requirements that they're going to have for the courts, they'll probably have that and maybe even more for the schools. So I emailed a copy of that to him the other day so he could take a look at that because the hard part, Roger, as you well know, is they say, here, you got to do this and you got two or three weeks to do it and you can't source the material and you can't get it built in time and get it in.
So actually, June 19th, there will be a large Zoom meeting with the governor, mayor's, superintendents that, and the Indiana Department of Education, state board of health, that is going to give us some guidance for public ed as far as what they would recommend. So after that conversation being had, I think we'll have more conversation with schools and what their needs will be.
A related issue to the schools, and this is something that the early childhood group at Forward Wayne County is looking at and concerned about, is how to get childcare facilities back up and running safely. And as we look to getting people back to work, the kids need a safe place to be while their parents are working, so that may be another issue.
Childcare is a legitimate expense through the CARE Act. It's just a question of how you might utilize that. Right up front, that's one I haven't gotten to yet to take a look at to see what possibly we could do in childcare. I know there's a lot of facilities in Wayne County, but there's probably not enough that you really need.
I would suggest, Kenny, that we may want to talk to Pat Heine and Nancy Green, who head up the early childhood group for Forward Wayne County, and they're in touch with a lot of the directors of the childcare facilities.
Actually, schools are, as of July 1st, will be allowed to open childcare early learning centers. And a lot of what Mr. Higginbotham has brought to us on the courts, you're going to see the childcare doing the exact same thing. A lot of cleaning, a lot of PPE to put into place. A lot of cleaning, a lot of PPE to put into place.
Okay, very good. Next, those of you from western part of the county, a lot of discussion's been going on recently about the airport in Hagerstown, as to whether or not they were going to close that airport, whether they're going to put solar panels out there, or what they were going to do. So I got a call Sunday from former county commissioner Max Smith, asked me if I was aware of everything that was going on in Hagerstown. I said, well, I was a little bit aware that Mary Ann, Commissioner Butters, had made comment to me about what was going on. Could I remember back if anything had happened? I said, well, not my 28 years on this side, could I remember anything about the Hagerstown Airport? So the easiest answer when we look at what may have happened is for me to always go Beth Fields, who is very good in researching this for us. And Max was able to give me a kind of a timeframe. He said, early 1990. He saw this one something possibly, well, it turned out to be 1989. And Beth was able to go into the records and to find the information I was looking for. I won't dwell on this, I'll only read you one paragraph, because the county does become involved in the airport in Hagerstown. But in the interlocal agreement that was signed in 1989, it says that "Hagerstown shall not transfer or sell the airport property, nor shall Hagerstown cease operations of the municipal airport at the airport property without the prior written consent of the Board of Commissioners of Wayne County, provided however that such consent shall not be withheld if Hagerstown reimburses Wayne County for the full amount of the direct financial assistance provided by Wayne County here under." At that time, they provided $25,000 to Hagerstown to help purchase the airport. So I do have this information. I've put it on the desk of both commissioners. We'll give Ron a copy of that today. And I know there's ongoing discussion still going on as to what they're going to do with the airport.
So if they did reimburse the county, would they reimburse it with today's dollars? Twenty-five thousand? I mean, that's about a dollar and a half in 1989.
Well, the interest rates in 1989 were about 15 points.
They were considerably higher than they are now.
That's right. Okay, so I thought I'd give you that information, because I'm sure you'll get asked about it, or may have already been asked about that. Okay, as far as COVID-19 again in the CARES Act, I've had some discussion with President Plaster and myself about our security guard that we have. We've all been thrilled to death that the sheriff was putting in place a security guard for us. One of the problems that we have ran into is breaks, lunchtime, and training that the officer has to do. So there have been many occasions when we've had no security guard at that time, the facility is locked. Beth Field has been very generous in going down and unlocking the door and letting people in when we've had appointments and so on. So in talking about, okay, what could we do? Since this is related to the COVID-19 and looking at the expenditures, pretty much decided that we could hire a person, part-time person, contract person. And so in conversation I've had with Sheriff Ritter about, could we do this? And we, let's just say for talking purposes, we have a person that works 29 hours, that person could shift not only between our side here, but with the courthouse as well, in assisting in some of the things that we need to do. That person could be paid for between now and the end of December out of COVID-19 or out of the CARE Act funding that we have. That gives us several months here to look down the road into 2021 as to how do we fill in the time when the security guard is gone? Does not do us any good if he's gone from 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock, when is one of our higher times that we have, that we have people coming in to the building, because other folks are on lunch break or something, and they're coming down here to do this. So that's something in the future that we need to think about. Randy is actually working to try and come back to me with a plan as to how he would see we would do this, as to whether he would do one of his reserve deputies and change the designation of that deputy, or how that would work. But I asked him to get to us just as soon as possible on that. So that's how we're moving there. I gave you Nancy Jackson. As you all know, we have moved-
Ken.
Yes, sir.
On that topic, I've just been observing people come in and out of the building. Is everyone supposed to get their temperature taken? I haven't seen any employees get it taken.
Well, usually-
And I've seen two out of three from the general public get it taken.
Well, all general public coming in the door should be tested, all right? If it's employee that has already been tested and may be going in and out, we do not test them when they come back in. But any person that comes in is tested. We write down who it is, what department they're going to, what the temperature was at that time, in case they would come down with COVID or something, and so that we can do the tracking on that to see who they became exposed to. And we're going to put that in more of a written form as we open up the building to make our people more aware. But Doug is supposed to be taking the temperature of all of those folks as they come in.
Is it also employees when they first come in, in the morning?
Yes. And also, we've been advising those folks also, even before they leave home, if they feel that they have any of the conditions that might be COVID-19-related, not to come in. And the other thing we're working towards, we just got, Mary Ann was very good in sourcing out the infrared thermometers for us on there. Steve sourced them out. And our goal is that we will have, in every department, we'll have one of the infrared thermometers. And in the new instructions, we'll take temperatures in the morning and in the afternoon of all of our people, what we'll be doing.
All right. I'm not sure that happened with some employees that came in.
Well, I'm going to double-check that now. Yeah, I'll find out what Doug's doing.
What time does the security guard start?
He starts at 8 o'clock. And you have folks coming in at 7:30, and that's been one of the things that we've run into, that we've talked about, would you bring him in at 7:30? Well, and then they've talked about cutting his lunch hour down. And then they said, well, then he goes home at 4 o'clock, so we have people from 4 to 5 coming in. So that's why we need this other person could really solve a lot of that problem for us. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I told you, I've made some contact with the schools on that. Also, wanted to make you aware that through the Public Health Department, we will be applying for a Ryan White grant. That will be $175,000 for that grant. All indications are that we will be funded for that. In meeting with Christine and talking about this grant, what would we have to supply? Would we have to hire a couple of people? Everything will be funded out of the grant, the employees that they hire will be funded. So my next concern was, well, where are we going to put these folks? And so we now have expanded in the new public health facility into the garage area. The garage area, we did have reserved for Steve for storage on that, but we do have all of the electrical and wiring that we need was in that garage before. So we will be moving the storage stuff that we have out. And if we are funded, which I feel very confident we are going to be funded on this, that we will move those folks into that area. And we now are busting at the seams in that public health building. From the time when I originally talked to you and what we anticipated would be in that facility, a lot of changes have taken place that the Board of Public Health has taken on some of the programs that we thought would stay with Dr. Kolder. And the Well Care Center has actually come to our Public Health Department. And so that's utilized a lot more space than I had anticipated clear back in the beginning. Steve's given you a good breakdown of what we see potentially is going to happen in the courts. He talked to you about the mail and some research that I've been doing on ultraviolet. I have found some wands that are available and researching that, to utilize these wands to kill the virus. They're relatively inexpensive. And so I haven't had a chance to even share that with Steve yet on that one. But I look at that and think that will be one of the answers for us on the mail, of which they've said, we've got to make sure that mail has no germs or anything on it. And I think one of these wands will work for that, that we can easily do that. And it doesn't take a long amount of time to be able to do it either. See if I've covered everything we've got going on. I think that's about it. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question?
Well, most certainly.
Do the commissioners have a plan for the commissioner's sale on June 25th, since the building is yet to be opened?
No, we do not. And so that is one we've been concerned about, because that can bring 50 to 100 people in here at that time, if it does. My guess is, we're not going to change what we have in here. And I'm not sure how many seats we actually, but we probably have a third of what we normally have. So we would not be able to get everybody in the facility here. And we may have to look at that and see if there's some way we can set up a Zoom-type thing that people could get on that to bet on a particular project.
Or we could probably rent you the Coolman Center and you could-
We could spread them out there, well.
I think if you talk to the president of the commissioners, he might put you a deal on that.
Well, we've been looking at Coolman, we've been looking at the Raper Center, and Elder Berman is right. Matter of fact, one of the key places that I've looked at for the courthouse has been the Elder Berman Facility. I've already talked to the mayor about it, the fact of what we might do to turn the Elder Berman Building into a judicial center, and how we could, if we add a jury call of 150 people, how we could put them into that facility, spread it out. We could even have the attorneys in the courthouse do a Zoom-type thing. So we are trying to think ahead as to what facilities are available to us. We have looked at Raper as well, President Plaster, and the Coolman, that that's a possibility that we could do also. So we are thinking out of the box as to how do we do this? How do we keep the distance? And you'll hear me preaching all the time to wear these masks when you're out in the public, because you don't know whether you're carrying the virus or not. And unfortunately, as we've begun to open up, I can tell you that people are not wearing their masks. And I get that feeling that it's all over, there's no problem. Hey, we go. I've done some unsophisticated surveys by going out to Walmart, sitting in the car for an hour, and chalking it down, how many people are wearing the mask, how many male, how many female. First time I did it, I had about a 20% usage, about 95% female, 5% male. Last time I did it, I had less than 5% that were wearing masks.
Ken, you're either very, very dedicated, which undoubtedly you are, or you really have nothing whatsoever to do but parking lot at Walmart.
This has been full-time in doing this. And, you know, when I go out and tell people I don't wear a mask, you know, I try to back it up with the information I have to try and explain to them why they need to do it.
So that begs the question, when this building reopens to the public, are you contemplating a requirement that anyone coming in wear a mask?
Yes, anyone that enters this facility will have to wear a mask. Any of our folks that are dealing with the public at the time when they're dealing with the public will have to wear a mask. We'll have the sneeze screens up for everybody, so we'll have the screen up, plus our employee will have the mask on at the time. Now, when they're back at their desk, if they'd like to take it off if there's somebody around, similar to what we've been doing, that's fine. But anytime you have any interaction on there, we'll require them to have that. We'll also, as we source out the hand sanitizers, we'll probably have a couple of different things. We'll have some smaller cans, about eight-ounce cans of hand sanitizer, plus gallon container, which we'll have at each of the individual offices, so folks can hit that. We'll also, as the folks come in, we'll be taking their temperature, as well as making sure that they use a hand sanitizer before they go to wherever their appointment is that they have. So I think I've covered most of what we've been working on, but it has been a very busy time for everybody. I can't thank folks enough, the cooperation from all the different departments, and working with them has been very, very good. I mean, they've just done a good job, they've worked well from home. We've learned a lot from this. My worst fear is that we have a resurgence in November, December, January, February, and March. I will say, we will be prepared. I'll make sure we have the PPE equipment that we need on hand, and if we get a real spike, that we'll be able to take care of that at that time.
Any other questions for Mr. Pous?
I got a question on commissioner's sale. Once that property hits the commissioner's sale list, is that absolute, or can it be redeemed?
Well, it can be redeemed. I usually don't see up till noon on that, or what, I was trying to think.
I would have to consult with the treasurer.
Yeah, they can, even if it's on the list, they can still come in and pay their taxes. But I can't give you the, I think prior to the day that we have that, if they come in and pay their taxes, we take it off the sale list.
This is a deed sale, those are redeemed.
Oh, they're deeded to us, okay. That's not the normal tax sale that we got coming up.
No, it's not the tax sale, it's the commissioner's sale.
Deed sale, okay. That is a little different, and I'd have to check on that, but I still think there is a way, even though it's to us, that there might be a way that they can redeem that. But I'd have to check, Carrie, that's one, that's a legal question that I really don't have an answer to. I don't know whether Ron has an answer to that one or not.
It's fact sensitive. You know, we've had situations where people made agreements with the treasurer, even the key is getting it done before the deed is actually issued to the commissioners. We have had cases where the deed was issued to the commissioners and the taxes had been previously redeemed, so that requires that we do a quick deed back to the person entitled to it. But the commissioner's deed sales are a little bit different than tax sales, so, you know, usually at that point, the possibility of redemption is very minimal.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what answer, where it was redeemed, and continues to be an eyesore, they're still not taking care of it, probably not even paying the taxes on it. But it was redeemed.
If they redeemed it, then it's still three years again before it would come back to us, yeah, unfortunately.
Okay, Mr. Beeson had a question or comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ken, back way up to the jail bond.
Oh, jail bond?
Yeah. Has the fact that these contractors have, or haven't been in, you know, doing the job at the scheduled time because of all this problem, now, does that hurt any of our deadlines on having to spend our monies?
No, as long as we're under contract.
Okay.
We're okay, and we're under contract, so it's no problem.
I was concerned that it might, okay, thank you. And again, thank you very much for all the work you've done over the last several months.
Thank you.
Ron, speaking of the jail bond, isn't there some resolution that we, council still needs to adopt?
It will, yes, there is, and it'll probably be in early July.
Okay.
Drafting a rough draft, but I can send it to the LGF, I think, and they can kind of reapprove it, so you don't end up having to come back and redo some.
Great, thank you. Anything else from Mr. Pous?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any citizen comments? Our next regularly scheduled meeting is July the 1st, and our next workshop, June 17th. Anything else from council, comments, questions?
Move for approval. Or move for adjournment. I'm proof to prove your adjournment.
Seconded by Mr. Saunders. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.